Hello, everyone. Welcome to our February Barberville Board of Education meeting, where we're zooming today out of a precaution for our weather that was projected for today. We're glad to have everyone to join us. Eddie Smith hopefully will be joining us, our chairman, very soon. But to start our meeting, we have our vice chair, Sandy Lindy, who'll be leading the process today.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actions by consent.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, actions for discussion. We need to discuss and or accept the 2019-2020 financial audit report.
Okay, we have Matt Shackelford with us today from our auditor's office, and he's done all the work on site with us the last few years, last couple of years, anyway, Matt. We're glad to have you on with us today, and I'll let you get started. Normally, he does provide us with a hard copy of the audit on the day that he does arrive, but Jennifer did send you an email, so you have that email to help you as he goes over our audit for you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Well, I'll just run through the major points of the audit. If you have questions at the end, it's fine, or you have questions after you read through it, you can always contact me at my office in Corbin, and I'll gladly go over anything with you. The first report that we come to in the audit is, I guess, in the PDF, is on page five of the PDF. This is our overall independent auditor's report. Again, this was for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. We were able to give the district an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. It's the best opinion that you can get as a district. So we had nothing that kept us from stating that your financial statements and notes were materially stated in that matter. I always tell the board, if you go to page eight, if you want to read any of this large book we produce, almost 89 pages now, if you go to page eight and read through the management discussion and analysis, this gives you just some pinpoint template type information for the district for the year end in '20, and also makes comparisons to the prior year, so you can kind of get an idea of how things trended from the prior year to the '20. Page 12 is where your basic financial statements start. Again, I'm not going to go through each and every one of these, but the first couple you can come to, we refer to as the government-wide financial statements. This incorporates your pension liabilities and deferrals, incorporates your long-term liabilities, and incorporates your capital assets. So you can kind of get it, this really gives it like a business-type overall picture of your district, including with all those factors. You still come out with a positive net position, which is a good financial indicator. They're at the bottom on your government activities. For whatever reason, the state requires us to allocate some of that pension information to the food service program. Otherwise, your food service program would have a, would not be a negative net position. And again, if you are new, the pension, the pensions are given to us by the state and simply added to the financial statements. There is no payment plan like there is with bonding. You still pay in just the same as you always have with the teachers and employees contributions along with the match. At this point, there is no extra payment per se that has to be paid by the district. And I'll go over to the next page, on page 13. This is your government-wide kind of net income statement. It incorporates depreciation, you know, we remove debt service principal payments, and we remove any items that are capitalized, just like you would do in a business profit statement. For like, if you was getting your tax, you have a business and you're getting your taxes, or something like that. Next page quickly, this is what you're normal, used to seeing on page 14. This is the government fund approach, which is how the school of finance operates with the AFR balance sheet. Basically shows current assets and current liabilities. And you will, you know, you will not have capitalizations here. You will simply expense those purchases, and you'll expense a debt principal payments, and there's no depreciation. And lastly, the page 16, this is your, kind of what you're used to seeing when you're looking at your general fund and the budgeting. This is the, this is the fund accounting method, which shows your current revenues and current expenditures for the fiscal year. Overall, you only had a negative change of $13,000 in your fund balance. So that's a, it's very positive, very positive, that you didn't have to go into and use any of your contingents. Just for reference, on page 23 is where the notes to the financial statements start. If you want to kind of read what I've kind of said quickly and understand the differences in the financial statements, and how we, and the finance staff account for certain, certain accounts, you can read through there, and it'll explain on how those things are accounted for. I'll jump to using the part that, you know, is kind of functional for the board. It's page 33, we, is where the debt and the capital lease notes start. If you just want to get a picture of where your debt is at, at 630-20, with your, first with your KISTA, which we, or capital lease payables, the buses, and then past that is your bonding, and it'll show you how much you're, you're looking to pay for the future, as well as what the state is, is promised to pay to the construction commission. And then there's a few dozen pages about the pension. If you want to read about how they come up with their formalization for the debt, for the net pension liabilities and the allocations, it's, it's all there if you want to read through that. Page 52 is, this is where your supplemental financial statements start. These are not basic financials, these are just supplemental to your, to your audit. And you can look through, the first one is a budget. We have to do a budget actual comparison for the general fund, special revenue fund. You can kind of see how the budget, budgeting went for the year, and for the, for the general fund. Overall, it was, you know, we didn't have any, any unfavorable, excuse me, didn't have much unfavorability at all. Most of that was very positive, meaning that the budget was fine. And, you know, there is some, there is some, sometimes with the on behalf payments, if you understand that this is another number the state gives us, that we just pop onto the audit with the AFR at the end of the year, sometimes that affects the budget if it's, because it's not always budgeted for, because it's unknown what the amount's going to be. All right, and just to jump through, bunch more, we'll get back to our second report. That's going to be on page 79. We refer this as the Yellow Book Report. This is a report on financial internal controls and compliance with government auditing standards. Basically, the KRS statutes that the schools have to follow. We have to go in, and we've done a template of all those statutes, and we do performance compliance testing on those items, such as the minutes and board meetings and budgets, following the right paperwork when you've had your tax rates, et cetera. We were able to give the district a clean opinion on this as well. We have no, we have found any matters that were noted. And so, again, a clean and modified opinion on that perspective. And then our last report on 81 is now referred to as Uniform Guidance. This is your federal, federal major federal programs, internal control and compliance. Each year, we, as auditors, were required to look at your larger federal programs, and the federal government gives us basically auditing procedures for those programs to test not just financial, but internal control compliance that they have to perform. If that's third-party reporting, or certain types of applications, et cetera. Again, and thirdly, we, we were able to give an unmodified opinion for the federal programs. So, as usual, overall, we, we didn't have any issues that were noted, and no findings for the district. And lastly, we, we didn't have any findings for the activity funds act, so.
Well, Matt, that is great, and especially in a year COVID where clean is the word you want to hear. It's definitely the word we always want to hear at the audit. So we appreciate the work that you do, but I am extremely grateful for our finance people here in the district. They follow their procedures, and they have everything to the letter. So Jennifer and Martha and April and Joella and Michelle, who work in our other programs, do a phenomenal job, and the principals do as well overseeing that that process followed correctly. So I'm, I'm appreciative of that.
I appreciate it. Again, if anybody has any questions, you can find my phone number on the letterhead of the audit or contact Jennifer or Ms. Dixon, and I'm in the Corbin office. And you call me anytime, and I'll answer your questions.
Anyone have a question for him at this point? Okay, thank you very much, Matt, for joining us.
Thank you. We'll, we'll see you guys soon.
Okay. Just wanted to let you know that Mr. Smith is caught up in his office, and he couldn't get away, so he asked for us to just continue the meeting, and he would try to get in and listen to the, listen to us on YouTube. So Sandy, if you'll continue with us, we'll go to the next item.
Discuss and or take action to approve the 2021-2022 school calendar for the first year.
Okay, Mr. Carey, would you please talk to us about the process for the school calendar?
Ms. Dixon, Ms. Dixon, I'm sorry, we need action to accept the financial audit.
Sorry. We need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to accept the audit.
I'll second.
And Benita seconds. We have a motion by Blair Skidmore and a second by Benita Williams. And now Sandy, we can discuss the second item, which is item B, to approve the 21-22 school calendar. This is actually the first reading, and Mr. Carey will walk us through that process, which is outlined by board policy, and he has all the details to fill us in.
All right, you should have four options for the calendar in front of you. This is the first reading. I will just go, these are normal school year. Hopefully, that's what we're back to next year, 185 contract days, 175 instructional days in the calendar. Option one is starting school on August 5th. Got Labor Day, a two-week fall break, Thanksgiving break, two-week Christmas break, your Martin Luther King holiday, two-week spring break. School ends on May 25th, closing day on May 26th. Option two is what, we've had these two previously. School starts on August, or opening day on August 11th. School starts on August 12th. Labor Day, holiday, one week during, hopefully, the Daniel Boone Festival this year. Thanksgiving break, two-week Christmas break, Martin Luther King holiday, one week for spring break, the first full week of April. School ends May 18th, closing day May 19th. These were the two calendars. The committee met, we've had a group text, which everybody participated in. The top two options were options one and two. Last Tuesday, I put out a link on our website. It has got around 150 votes on it. Option one and two were the highest two vote-getters on those. Both those, for the committee and for the community vote, were very close. The only difference, and I, I had one and two originally, that was all I had. I had requested, I had a request from the committee for options three and four, and option three has the two-week fall break, one-week spring break. Option four has one-week fall break and two-week spring break.
Mr. Carey, to clarify, option two was the overall choice from the committee and your survey. Is that correct or not correct?
That was, yeah, I mean, it was almost a tie, but that was the one that won.
Okay, so what is the difference between, the difference between option one and two?
On the vote?
No, on the actual calendars.
The option one has the two-week option for fall break and spring break, and option, that's, option one has the two-week fall break and spring break. Option two has one-week fall break and spring break.
What is the start date differences for those two calendars?
It's one-week difference. There's August 5th on the first, ending August 25th. That's option one. Let me say that again, starting August 5th, ending May 25th. On the first one, option two, August 12th is the first day of school. May 18th is the last day of school.
Okay, so it's, it's very, very close. The big differences deal with starting school earlier, a week earlier with option one, and having a two-week fall break basically is the huge difference between option one and two. And it's ultimately, this is just the first reading, and it is for discussion. As an administrator, looking at the calendar, since we had to delay instruction this year, I would prefer that we look at the later start. In addition to that, my, one of my concerns is we're just barely back in school before fall break, and taking a complete 14 days off in October does impact the instructional flow. So as a superintendent, my recommendation would be option two, where we started on August. Brian, that date is August?
August 12th, and I was just looking, option three and four also has that August 12th start date.
Okay, so August 12th would be our start date, and we would have the week of the Daniel Boone Festival for a fall break, instead of having two weeks, a total of 14 days, that close to the beginning of the start of the school year. So the opt, there was an option, I think, that only had the one week of spring break, and that was not popular with people. So what we normally do when we look at those calendars is we say, if there's a reason that we have to do makeup days, and we have those two weeks built into spring break, we will attend school that first week, so please schedule your vacations for the second week of the spring break, just in case there is a reason that we should have to utilize those five days. So share with us your thoughts on the differences between one and two, which were the two popular calendars with the committee, and also the parents that replied to the surveys.
About the, the votes were very close. Option fourth with a two-week spring break was the third vote-getter, but it was way down the line.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to narrow it down as we're, we're asked to do through what the committee puts out as their selection, and then what we actually asked the parents in the survey. So in the survey to the parents, there was the two top options that were given to them, correct? Or was all four?
All four options.
Okay. Okay. So does anyone have any thoughts on that as far as the instructional flow of the school year, or anything that might impact things that you have seen going on in the district before, in your own household with your children?
I think one of the things we'll have to take into consideration is if we're going back to a normal, traditional school schedule in the fall, this will be the first opportunity. Some parents will have the kids back in school full-time where they're not at home, and this is allowing them to get back in the swing at, at work. And not just the interruption of the educational flow, but having to then transition back to two weeks of the kids at home when they're trying to sort of get caught up on, on work and everything else. I think also puts a burden on, on some families. And so I think that's something else we need to take into consideration coming out of what we've had to deal with these, you know, this past year or so, and look forward to sort of a sense of normalcy and regulation. And I, I agree that it's, it's best to have sort of set, a set calendar that people can count on as far as which days are going to be on, which days are going to be off. I think that plays a big part of it as well. So I, I, my initial thought is I lean towards option two as well. I think that, that makes more sense.
I think most of the parents are for option two because of that reason.
As well, yes, and, and we'll talk later in our agenda about a, a plan for re-entry, but that, there's going to be a lot of issues that we have to deal with, and we need that prep time as we did need this year, and it was very valuable to, to prepare for whatever those changes are going to be. And as you know, that we get last-minute guidelines and last-minute guidance along the way, because there's a lot of unknown variables here. So I, I think that the safer plan for us would be to utilize an entry date that was a little bit less than the beginning of August. It was September before we actually started this year, so let's pray that we don't have to do that. And again, this is the first reading, so as board members, if you want to talk to other families who may not have been able to complete the survey or just did not really understand the difference in the options, then we can always, before we do the final vote at the second reading, be able to discuss those concerns as well.
We'll leave the survey up until the next board meeting, see what, see what happens.
Okay, so you can encourage anyone that says they may not have seen it, and let them know where it's at, and we'll try to re-advertise that as well, and get that out there.
Link was on the Facebook page, and we'll, we'll repost it back to the top.
Okay, it, it was on the website page too, I believe. Yes, it was. Okay, we don't have to take action, as that is only the first reading. So we could move, Sandy, when you're ready, to the next item.
Discuss and or take action on a fishing team.
Okay, I will let Mr. Middleton address this in detail, but we did have a group come to us about the opportunity for a fishing team. We've added a lot of sports over the last couple of years, and we've tried to reach out and meet the interest of our students. We do have a couple parents who won't commit to coaching, but say that they feel like that there will be people that would be qualified to do so. The coach, the fishing is a little bit different, because it's actually on the lake. So there's entrance issues that Paul can probably, or Tim can probably speak to most high schools now around us do have fishing teams. It's a great opportunity for some of our students. So I wanted to ask you to consider allowing us to create a position for a fishing coach and look at what student number, what the number of students would be that would be interested in that program. And should we have enough to field a team, then we could be able to move forward. I think the season is getting very close. And I'll let Paul, will you speak to the particulars of, of what you know about that program?
Yes, as a matter of fact, some of the season is already underway with the fishing, the fishing teams around us. I know our neighboring county has got one in the process right now. They're, they're fishing. The way it, the way it works is each boat can only have two kids per boat, and then you have to have a captain in that boat. The boat has to be insured, has to be an insured boat, as well as the captain has to have a background check to be in there. So basically, what, what the captain would be of that boat, he would be an adult who owns the boat, obviously, it'd be their boat, with two students in that boat, insured, of course, and, and then the background check done for that captain. As far as practices and things like that go, most of the practices that they do, they do on their own. They can, they can gather with that boat captain, put those two students in that boat, go down to Laurel Lake and, and practice, or whatever, whatever the case might be. I know with KHSA, they have a sort of a restriction on traveling out of state, but I know there has been some, some leeway as to where that teams can actually go to Norse Lake or Cherokee, or wherever the case might be, a little bit south from us on that. We have had some students in the past that expressed interest in that. It's just been a matter of having somebody step up, step forward and say, hey, I've got a boat. I've got the insurance on the boat, and I'm willing to, to have, to let you, you know, use that boat with me. And it, more times than not, it's, it's one of the participants' mom or dad, you know, one of their parents that's going to do that. I think it'd be a good thing, I, I, listen, I, I want to commend the board and show my appreciation to the board for, over the, the past few years, we've added numerous sports to give these new students an opportunity to do something extracurricular in times like now, they need something extracurricular. They really need something that's an escape for them, and it's, it's just an outlet that they have, particularly to something that, that they really enjoy doing. But that, that's, that's pretty much what I know about the, the fishing part. It has to be an insured boat, you know, you have to have background checks with an adult on that boat, and you can only have two athletes or two student athletes on that one particular boat. There's not a requirement on boat size or anything of that nature. Tim, do you know anything that I've not covered?
Tim, would you speak to the liability of, of a school responsibility for a fishing team versus a basketball team?
We just, as far as your liability, just get up with the, the board's liability carrier and make sure that fishing is covered like any other extracurricular activity.
Okay.
Are there any other costs that could be incurred by the school? I know, will they need uniforms, t-shirts, equipment?
Well, they got, yes, they'll need, of course, they, they typically just use it's a fishing shirt, what it's called. They have, they'll have a fishing shirt made. There will be entry fees in the, for, to fish the tournaments, of course, there's entry fees. One thing that works out really well with the wrestling, the way it is, we work together with, with Knox Center, we share the same coaching facilities, and so we can, we, we work together where one school's not hit with all those fees. But you, you will have entry fees for these tournaments.
Yes, and, and Benita, we would handle those as we do the other sports, and, and you know, we're small, so a lot of our teams do a lot of fundraising, and then we help supplement those costs and try to make sure that we're providing what each of our teams need. And we would look at the out-of-state restrictions and, and follow those very carefully. We've, we've got about four kids that I know we've been approached by, and two, two apparent grandparents that have boats that said that they're willing to participate and help with that. But we would have, we would be sure that we would have all of those requirements met and everything checked off before we would fill a position and allow our kids to participate and be on the water.
I do think Ms. Dixon and, and board members, Mr. Carey has just texted me, said that, that students that participate in it, they have to take insurance out through VASS. It's a, it's an organization for, I guess, high school athletic fishing would be the case. I'd say, I would assume it's something similar to the, the insurance that we offer here at school for students to purchase.
Sounds like a, a good outlet for our students. I know a lot are interested in that.
And there's scholarships, there's college scholarships, and lots of money there for that.
Yeah.
The, the only question I have is, is related to the, the boats being used. Will we require any type of an inspection or approval by an agency to certify that the boat is in good working order? There's no safety issues with the boat. I know it's one thing to have the boat insured, it's another thing for the boat to be safe, and making sure that those boats are in good operation, that the safety equipment on And making sure that those boats are in good operation, that the safety equipment onboard is working. And then for our students and, and the captains as well, having some type of, uh, uh, they had sort of like some automatic flotation, uh, life jackets, things like that. Uh, maybe worthwhile to invest for these students. I know sometimes they're in, in these tournaments, sometimes there's accidents, things happen. Uh, and anything we can do to make sure that those students are safe and that we've, um, you know, eliminate as best we can any risk to them being out in the open water, uh, because it does add a, another sort of element to, uh, to what can happen.
It does. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Carey. I'm sure you can talk to the requirements. I'm, I'm almost positive Blair that those things are required and there is an inspection process. But, uh, Mr. Carey may know that or Mr. Middleton, but if not, we will research that and shoot, uh, some information back out to you all as well. But I'm almost a hundred percent positive that there is a process for both of those things that you mentioned.
Yeah. I, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. As you said, anything that we can give our students that gives them a leg up, that gives them an opportunity to earn, uh, a scholarship opportunity, something that they wouldn't have an, uh, uh, you know, an option to before, I think is always worthwhile to do.
I pulled up the High School Athletic Association Insurance Rules. And the students have to be a member of a group called Student Angler Federation. And that provides some insurance for all fishing team activities. Um, then the High School Athletic Association also will provide catastrophic medical coverage for both the regional and state competitions. And then we could check with their board liability carrier to make sure this activity is covered under it as well.
Jennifer can do that for us tomorrow.
I will say, Ms. Dixon, that what Blair mentioned about the flotation devices and all the safety stuff, that's all that you have that in your boat anyway.
Great.
But, and, and most of them too, once they get in, once they get at this level, if they've, uh, you know, the, the ones that's, that's into fishing and, and do a lot of the fishing, they've got the, the automatic flotation devices that they wear there. Mr. Carey knows, uh, from fishing and I've, I've, um, I've worn them as well. It just, it's just a little thing that fits right around your cheek or around your neck. And if, as soon as you hit the water, it expands. So, and, and most of them, most of them, I, I would have something similar to that. It would be a lightweight type thing. So yes, that would have to be, that's mandatory.
Okay. So for the board, uh, there's two actual issues that we're looking at. One is the go ahead to create, um, and move forward with a fishing team for, uh, Barbiville Independent. The second issue would be, um, a, the stop and a pay for our coach. Uh, at this point in time, uh, I guess we need to know if we want to move forward with it before I discuss with you what our options are that it, for our similar coaching positions. So, um, I will let you decide if you want to, uh, move forward with that and adding that to one of the things that we offer here at Barbiville, or if we want to table it and wait to a later date.
I'd like to move forward with that.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. So we need a form. Let's have a form.
Yeah, what's the season? When is the season? And usually it's just started. When is it over?
Well, I'll, I can find that out. If you'll give me about five minutes, I'll find that out. I'm not sure on the exact dates of it. So I don't want to misquote something, uh, and lead you in the wrong direction. But I will, I'll, I've got a contact here that I'll get ahold of right now and I can, I can tell you that here within two or three minutes. Okay?
Okay. So, uh, Sandy, I guess we just need a formal motion and a second if we want to move forward.
Do we have a motion to move forward?
I'll make a motion to move forward.
I'll second it.
A motion made in second. Um, the second issue that we need to address is the stop and that we would create for the, uh, coach. And as Mr. Middleton pointed out, one of the things we did talk about is we will have a coach, but each boat, depending on the number of kids that we have, will have a captain that is normally the owner of the boat that has gone through the process that the High School Athletic Association requires and all the safety measures that there, there is. So we would officially have one coach. And the, uh, the, the captains in the boat would, could or could not be one of those coaches. So, uh, what we do now is, um, we pay our archery coach $750 stoppin' for the archery, uh, work. We pay our tennis coach more than that. Uh, we pay our tennis coach $1,250. Last year we utilized, well, of course, last year was different, but our intention was to use the coach for both the girls and boys team. Uh, so that's why you see the difference there, um, with those two sports. Um, I don't think that either one of those would be something that would deter someone from coaching. Um, the archery, uh, teams practice a lot and they work very hard. And that, the, again, that's the lower end of the spectrum with the $750. And since that doesn't require, um, organized practices on behalf of a coach, I would probably suggest that we begin with that $750 stoppin' for, um, since we're just starting this late in the season for our coach. But there's also a stop and that we have that is an additional, uh, amount of money, which is $1,250 for, for that. And I'm, I'm just not sure how many participants we are going to have and exactly how much time is involved in it. Um, so I would let you all be the judge of what you feel about that.
Ms. Dixon, I've got the dates pulled up here from KHSAA.
Okay.
The, the practice, which is normally what I've been told by the, our Knox Central's coach. That begins October 1st and that is mostly if you have a lot of teams and you have qualifiers to, to narrow that down for the region. And the region is this year is April the 24th through the thirtieth. I don't know what that means. I guess you can just go anytime between them days. It's got a first region and last region and both of those are the April 24th through April the 30th. And then the state is Fa- May 8th through the 14th.
Now, one thing that they do to add to that, Mr. Carey mentioned, is that they have their, if you've got more than six boats on a team, then you have to have that qualifier and that's where you go as your own individual team. You go to Laurel Lake and the top six boats then would go on, uh, to your regional, your regional, uh, tournaments and then go on into the state tournaments. And once you become a, a member of a, of a fishing team and this organization that, uh, Mr. Crawford was talking about as far as through this, uh, uh, provider, uh, those students are then eligible, which it's something they do on their own. But they're eligible throughout the summer to fish in other, uh, regions. You know, they can go fish in Tennessee as a member of that, that club and that organization. It's just something they have to do on their own. So there's, there's some benefits to that beyond the regional and state tournaments that we, that we actually have. So.
Could we need a stipend for, uh, the captains that would be hauling a boat and hauling students? And the insurance on them hauling them?
We don't cover the insurance of the boats because they're privately owned. That's just a practice that they, that has been going on since that. I do know that because I, I did check on the fact that, that the boats had to be insured. So we don't do that. Uh, I guess we would probably have to pay in expense the fuel. Um, I'm just thinking that there would be some added expenses. Um, so, you know, we could do a stop and, and then we could always a- agree to pay that, pay the fuel and help with those costs like we do with transporting our other teams.
Okay. Is it permitted for our captain to haul students in their private vehicle to these tournaments? This is my question. Really? It wasn't insurance about the boat. It was about the parent or a, a captain hauling these students.
We, we, we can draft an agreement for the parents to sign a release, allowing them to be transported in a private vehicle.
Okay. Cause I knew that would come up. Okay.
It does with those sports where we have fewer students participating.
I think that we had that agreement from past when we did train on the buses.
I know it got to be common for a while with golf teams.
Yes, absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
And then in, um, playoffs where you had individual players, the coaches, um, normally have to go through, well, they will have to go through all the process for crime checks and all that kind of thing. And in the past, we have utilized school vehicles at times, but we don't, we don't do that very much anymore because they're not new.
Mm-hmm.
So we use those new school buses.
Okay.
So I guess what would you like to do about the offering a stop and for the coach? Would you like to, um, mirror the archery stop and? Or do you think that there should be an increase, uh, to the stop and that we paid the tennis coach at this point in time?
I'd say we start off at 7:50 with the stipend and, um, you know, go from there.
I would agree, especially right now since the season is basically, but it could be halfway over if you actually start, started in October. But start with 7:50 and evaluate for next year.
I think that's a really good idea. I think that, uh, wouldn't be bad to evaluate your, all of your salaries at the same time when you do your salary sched- schedule for the next year and look comparatively at the seasons, the timeframes within the seasons and the requirements of the coaches. So I, I agree that that would probably be a very good thing to start out with. So does someone make the motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
To start with 7:50.
Start with 7:50 for a stipend for a fishing team coach.
I'll say.
Sandy's trying to unmute to get a vote.
Hi.
Okay. I do apologize. I don't have the updated agenda with me because mine is just ending with the C.
Okay. Um, I will tell you that the next item is to discuss the CARES Act, the ESRS funding. Um, and so that's me. So I'll just, um, go with that from this point. Um, as most of you know, that were with us when we started with, um, COVID-19 last year, uh, we were given some relief funds to offset the additional cost, um, for facilities and to comply with all of our requirements from CDC, KDE and public health. And once again, fortunately for us, we have been issued additional fundings to help offset the cost of those things. And if you remember, we purchased, we are one-on-one with laptops. We've purchased Wi-Fi boxes and gone into homes and taken those in there. We have made arrangements to deliver food throughout the year, even in the summer, by having, uh, additional staff, by having additional drivers and, and cooks come in more days. So, um, there has been a lot of flexibility with that spending that has allowed us to do the things that we needed to do to provide the best support for our families that we could. Um, our teachers spent the first few days of the calendar year training on how to use and deliver virtual instruction. He used the equipment, deliver virtual instruction. So, um, that's why our budget looks as good as it does. We did not have to dive into the general fund very much at all. Uh, we managed the funds very well. Um, so this year we have just been awarded the round two of ESRS funding and gear funding, um, for us to be able to utilize to continue to offset the cost, um, related to COVID and the extra restrictions and guidelines that we must follow. Now, the ESRS, as I refer to it, is, um, the acronym for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. So you will hear us refer to that as the ESRS money. Uh, we'll be able to follow the same guidelines as we did with the CARES Act before in what is allowable and not allowable. And our goal as a district is always to be able to provide the very best instruction and best services that we can to our students. So we prioritize being able, our, our instructional delivery in, um, addition to what we have to purchase as far as sanitation supplies and, uh, our mask and things that we have to do to stay within our guidelines. Um, so we do have, um, a plan that we will have to get together and let the board, um, take a look at. Our spending plan, our spending plan has to be turned in on May the 15th, 2021. So we do have flexibility, although, uh, we can begin spending money on, um, things at this point in time. That money can even be spent in a way that would help us with facility improvements for ventilation to reduce moisture. We have a couple of issues going on in our elementary with our roof. It would allow us to take care of some of the cost, if not all of the cost, um, there. So as we always have, we'll be weighing our options of how to spend the money in the best way to get the most out of it. Um, in addition to the ESRS monies, we have the Governor's Emergency Educational Relief, uh, Fund, the gear fund that is also part of that CARES Act package. And again, those guidelines are the same as they were, um, last year when we received them to offset the cost of COVID. And we're very, uh, happy that those are there for us. One of the big things that we try not to do as a administrative team when looking at the funding is make sure that, we want to make sure that everything is sustainable. First and foremost, education, providing the best education we can possibly provide, which means the best training for our staff that we can possibly provide. Uh, bringing in new equipments that we might need for, um, helping with our ventilation HVAC systems. Uh, we are looking now at some, uh, air purifiers to add to some of the things that we already have and, uh, window installation in a couple of our classrooms that have no windows. So, um, we're looking at all of those things in addition to instruction and instructional delivery. And, uh, with these funds, if we spend it in the right way, um, and we control it as outlined by KDE, then there's additional dollars to be had. So obviously we will follow those guidelines so that we will be able to pick up an extra, I believe it's 15% Jennifer. Um, there's an extra percentage that we can pick up as long as we're in compliance. And what that means is we don't spend over a certain percentage on just facility repairs or building something new, that we're actually using this money in a way that's going to impact long-term and has a relationship to COVID. And that's what we've done in the past and we'll continue to look at here as well. Did you have something to add, Jennifer?
Um, I was just going to say it comes to around $40,000. So if we follow their guidelines, that would, uh, that would allow us to, to get an additional, it's a little over 40,000.
So we'll take every penny we can get and we always follow those guidelines as closely as we can, um, a- as well. We're allowed to, uh, also bring in additional staff. I just want to say that you know, we actually did that last year. Uh, right now we have some extra people here that help us maneuver our students back and forth on hybrid days to help make sure that we're maintaining our social distances and doing the things that we need to be able to do because we didn't have enough manpower to do that. When you're not allowed to gather in common areas, you have to have more people to supervise kids because you can't bring them all together in a common area. So we were able to utilize those funds to help with those things as well. And it, and, and one of the biggest things for us when we first got the funding was being able to provide food for our kids and the necessary support to get it to them. So, uh, we're grateful for that. But that's where we stand now and, uh, we feel like that there are several things that we will be able to do out of this money that will, that we would need to do anyway out of the general fund long-term. So this will help us also to protect the general fund. That's all I have on that part.
Do we need a motion for that?
Uh, no, we do not. Uh, we, we, we don't need to accept those formally, Jennifer.
No.
Okay.
No, we'll have to do, we'll have action later, um, when we, uh, do the spending plan.
Great. Thank you all for that. And I know Sandy is in a noisy spot. We're gonna, the last thing we have are administrative updates. And I'm going to start out talking about reentry to five-day instruction. Um, I think everybody's waiting to hear that discussion. So I'm, I'm going to tell you where we are on the planning process with that. Um, we are looking at a return for those students who would like to return to five-day instruction. We are looking at a return for those students who would like to return to five-day instruction in addition to keeping our virtual option open all year for the remainder of the calendar year for those kids and families who choose to stay virtual. And I will tell you, just as a, a, a point is that it's been told to us through KDE that it's something that we need to plan long-term for, not just through the end of this year. So we're looking at programming and some different options for kids that may choose to stay virtual next year so that they would choose to stay within our school district. So virtual is not going away anytime soon. Online learning is not going away. And as a school district, we need to be innovative in the things that we can do to help those families who are more comfortable and feel like, but, but it is the way that they need to do instruction for their families. So with that in mind, some of the CARES money can also be used to look at things that we need for those purposes next year as well, and we'll be looking at that. But we began, as we promised our parents that we would, with a survey to ask our families if they wanted to come back to five days of instruction or if they weren't going to choose to stay virtual if they had the option. Now, I'm going to tell you that it's a very hard thing because there's no meeting in the middle and being able to plan and make it work appropriately. And by that, what I mean is, we can't do four modes of instruction. We're going to be able to do only two. We can't do hybrid, five days, and virtual. It's too much to plan around and to organize. So that throws a little bit in there for families who say, you know, I want my child to come, but I only want them to come for two days. The tracking and the tracing from kids who are in and out at different times makes our jobs here almost impossible until those requirements are lifted. So what we're looking at are the option to return five days a week or the option to stay virtual throughout the remainder of the school year. So the surveys, Ms. Chafin has done a tremendous job. She compiled the surveys for us and I'm going to let her speak to those in just a few moments. But we wanted to make sure to get the word out because we wanted a large percentage of our parents to have input into this decision-making so that we would have data to start the planning process for the reentry. So the Google survey, the surveys were put in every student's Google classroom, put on our web, the link on our website, the link in our Facebook site. We have placed it anywhere and everywhere. And in addition to that, after we received our initial responses, Ms. Chafin did a spreadsheet to tell us who we had feedback from and who we didn't. So Ms. Sprinkles had all of our instructional assistants, while our teachers were working virtually, to make phone calls, to contact those families and say, you know, we value your input. It's important to us. You haven't had a chance to get online and show them and tell them how to do that. So we wanted to make sure that all of our families had an opportunity to tell us what they really wanted for their kids. And, and Ms. Chafin can speak to you about the percentage that we have at this point. At this point, I do know that we have 14% of our families that have not completed the surveys. However, what we are doing is spending again tomorrow, trying to get some more answers from parents. Our instructional assistants will once again tomorrow make some calls for us, as will our admin. So we hope to be able to be very close to 100% with input so that everybody knows that we value what they would like to see for their children. Ms. Chafin, would you speak to the number of families that have responded to the survey and where we are actually with the results?
Okay, we've had 86% of all the families contacted. Some of those were contacted and they're getting back to us because they weren't sure about the decisions. I wanted to check for some different issues. But 86% is a great number to have input from. Of those, 64% of the students or parents want to attend five days a week. And only 22% have chosen to remain virtual through the end of the year. So we tried to make that, you know, clear to everyone that it was either virtual or five days a week and that that decision, you would have to continue that through the end of the year so that we could check numbers in the classrooms and make sure that we could meet all those CDC guidelines.
So we do feel pretty good about that percentage and we're still working.
Did you say 22% virtual?
Yes, 22% virtual, 22, that's correct. 64 for five days a week and 14%, we're, of course, we're still waiting on, but, well, less than 14%, I guess. One of the things that I want to clarify for parents who are listening to us is, is the reason that we had to say initially at this point, that when you choose, you have to stick with it, particularly with virtual. If you choose virtual instruction, then it's, it may or may not be a possibility for you to move back after you have said no, because if we can't meet the CDC guidelines because we have more kids, then we can social distance or more kids that we can protect by following all of our guidelines, then we won't be able to bring those back. With that being said, we took our results that we had in as an administrative team and spent the entire day yesterday and the day before going through those results, looking grade level and classroom by classroom at the number of students that were wanting to return five days and the number that would be virtual to make sure that we would have enough space. At this point in time, without the other 14% in, with some modifications, we are able to make that work. Modifications would mean, and I want parents to understand this, that in some of those larger classrooms, the kids would be moved into our larger space and the teachers would then rotate to come to them. We have to keep in mind that the hallway still has to follow social distancing guidelines. We still can't hang out with each other like we have in the past. Unfortunately, we're hoping that'll be lifted soon, but unfortunately, those are still social distancing, mask-wearing are still guidelines that we have to meet even after the vaccine has been rolled out to educators. So with that being said, we have three particularly large groups of, of grade levels and classes that kids want to come back five days a week. So we will move those classes into the gymnasium. The old gym will have to be utilized where there's lots more space and we can spread those kids out. We'll be utilizing and moving furniture around in the high school library. And in our home ec room, which is the largest room that we have on campus, will be our third-largest area for our groups that have kids that we cannot contain and still meet guidelines within the classroom. That is why we're saying that it will be very hard for us to guarantee that we can take everyone back at any given time throughout the school year. If we can, we will. If we can, we will. But once this reentry plan is put in place and our families have had an opportunity to choose, then we've got our spaces defined and we're really going to be at our maximum capacity. So we're hoping that it will equal itself out. And as we all know, some kids will start back five days a week and they will decide they want to stay virtual. So that's an easier solution. And then we could move someone into that spot. But first of all, the goal is to return for those kids who want to return five days a week, to return as much normalcy as we can while still meeting all of our guidelines. And I must stress, those guidelines have not gone away and they will not go away for a while, which means even after our educators have the opportunity for round two of the vaccine, which is coming up next week, we will not be able to go around without mask in our school. We will not be able to forget that we have to social distance. Those things protect our community and they are things that we must abide by. So we want to get back to five days a week. We know how hard it is on families, our families who are working and trying to provide and have to work outside of their home. We know it's very difficult. So we wanted to give the option for both virtual and five-day instruction to those families. And we've had a lot of people who've really been asking for, for this for a long time. And this is the first time that we feel like that our staff will be protected and it will be safer for us to return. Now, with that being said, I will say to you that we still have, and for the board, I'd like for you to know where you can find this at kentuckycovid19.com, I believe, or is it .org? Help me. Try both.
com.
.com can, there is this healthy, it's healthy at-school guidelines. This gets updated every time something changes. It's also been updated recently about the quarantine issue with faculty and staff that have been vaccinated. So you will want to refer to this, you will hear me, and so will our parents talk about the healthy-at-school guidelines, and it is in there. We were just issued on February the 9th, it's on there as well, the considerations for reopening schools. And that document is on the Kentucky COVID-19 page as well. And it says, pursue it to our executive order and our guidelines within that healthy return that we still must take into account these five safety expectations. Safety expectations are a must and they include social distancing, cloth face coverings, school health policies, and protective equipment, screening at schools, and sanitation and environmental factors, and contact tracing. None of those things will change, okay? But I will say to you that in considering where we are with the vaccines for our staff, we would like to shoot for a reentry five days a week for March the 8th. March the 8th allows our educators who choose to receive the vaccine, and we have 97, 98% of our employees that chose to do so, that will allow them to have a seven-day period after the last vaccine has been administered. So that is a recommendation and that is one that we would like to follow. So what that would mean for us as a school district is tomorrow, and I'll go ahead and announce this since tomorrow's the last day and it has been one of those roller coaster weeks, we will remain virtual and we will have virtual instruction tomorrow. We will have no students on-site tomorrow. Monday, we will return to our hybrid model and we're going to put those calendars back up on our website today so that parents know where we are with the blue and the white group. Monday, we'll return with the blue group, I'm correct on that, right, Ms. Chafin? And we will return with the blue group in a hybrid model with our virtual still taking place as well. On March the 8th, those students who we have on our list who have answered the survey, we will reach out to all of those families as a confirmation. And we will return with all of those kids five days a week, beginning Monday, March the 8th. The virtual instruction will continue throughout the remainder of this year as it has, with our teachers delivering the live instruction. So we hope that we will not be closed down in the middle of that, but we cannot guarantee that. We still have to meet all quarantine protocols and all health department protocols as we have in the past. So should there be an incident that happens, the health department will determine our next step once we are back five stu-, five days a week. Again, we're excited about the opportunity to be able to return some normalcy to our kids who really want to be here five days a week and for their parents who want them to be here five days a week. And still offer the opportunity for those families that are at greater risk and have made the decision to remain and stay virtual for the remainder of the year. I have to brag on our teachers, virtual instruction, it's just like being in the classroom. The only drawback that I really see is that the conversation between the kids is not as vibrant as it would be in a classroom without that computer screen and being livestreamed. And I think kids learn a lot from each other. I think they keep those conversations going within those classrooms. They're, they're critical thinkers, so they keep the conversation going. So, you know, that is the thing that I feel like is, is, is the only thing that is really lacking. I think our teachers have done a tremendous job and I, I want to give them a shout out for that. They've, they've done a fabulous job with where we are and our admin team has done a fabulous job assisting them with whatever resources that they need. So we do plan a five-day reentry for all of the students who choose to do so on March the 8th. So we should have some happy students out there and some happy parents. I will tell you that there are adjustments that's being made to the mode of instruction. And we will hear a play between, as Tim will agree, recommended and required several more times before this year is over. And we, as a district, will continue to follow those and put the health and safety and well-being of our students at the forefront of all decisions that we make. So we still have a lot of hoops to jump through in order to protect our students and our staff and our community, and we'll continue to do that. Even if we just get to do this for a week or two, let's hope that it is something that means a lot to our kids and something that, I, I'm hoping we get through it for longer than that. The protocols will be followed. So we have done very well in our hybrid model with maintaining our social distancing and keeping our kids protected and our staff protected. So let's just hope and be hopeful that we continue to do that. Do we have any questions or comments on, on that planning process that we're in right now?
I just want to say that yesterday, Mrs. Dixon, we had a slip of paper for every student in the school and she literally had us crawling in the floor. She was with us and we walked through a student schedule, kid by kid, to make sure that we can meet those CDC guidelines. So even though she had us on the floor, she was still in the floor with us, I have to say.
They didn't like that. They have new methods. I have to see things moved around, I, I do, but they did a really good job with that. But we did, we set up every single scenario with classroom to classroom in hopes that we could get as many of our kids back that want to return. So I've got a great team to work with in, in you guys as the board and the administrative team's fabulous. And we're just very fortunate here. I'm going to mention one additional thing to you and then I'm going to turn it over to the next administrator. We are really looking in our district as well as the state about decisions regarding promotion and retention and learning loss for our students. We are dealing with some students who, and Amy Sprinkles will share with you some of our already results where we've actually been very anxious to look at the progression of our students and very happy with the results that we've had. But we do have some students, a small percentage of students, who have not participated as they should, who have not grown academically as they should this year and who does not have the supports that they need to have in place outside of the walls of our school. So there are some things that we are going to have to be looking at and we are looking at a plan for decreasing those learning gaps that exist between those students. Retention and promotion is one of the things that KDE is talking to us about. And retention and promotion, I know you've heard a lot of parents say, this has been a waste of a school year. I couldn't get mine to do this. They're going to have to repeat a grade and, and then the very opposite of that. So what we have to do is, we have to look at it individually as case by case. The actual decision we want to make collaboratively with the parents, but the ultimate decision about retention and promotion lies at the school level based on the data that we have built around that. So I don't think we're going to deal with a situation where everybody feels like all students need to be retained. Because we don't see that. We don't see that there is that significant of a gap in the learning from where we were at this point in time last year. Although we know there's a lot of social and emotional gaps out there, we do know that there's learning loss. And what we're going to try to do is to utilize some of those funds that we talked about that we have for COVID that would allow us to, would, would allow us to pay our staff For summertime work, for early learning, uh, early hour before school, late hour after school. Uh, what we're doing is at putting a committee together. That uh, will look at the learning loss that we have had and come up with surveying kids on when would you come to make up these losses? Now, not only do we have a loss of learning, a learning gap, but we have an opportunity gap. We have chemistry and biology labs that kids were not able to come in and dissect and do the things that they needed to do. So we're going to put a a school committee together and we're going to look at the learning and opportunity losses. And and develop a plan to provide additional opportunities for kids outside of the regular school year. We've also been told by T R S that we can even even extend a teacher's calendar. Let's say a teacher worked at additional ten days. That ten days, it would be an an incentive for that teacher to work because that ten days could be counted in retirement. So there's a lot of things going on within the state that is allowing us to um, incentivize and pay premium um. Wages for our teachers to work additional times to help our kids and to help close those gaps. So I wanted to make you aware that we are working on that and we have started the process. I'm going to switch straight to Ms. Sprinkles and let her talk to our learning gaps and what we've been doing to monitor those as part of her administrative update.
Okay, uh, I wanted to just say that I agree with Ms. Dixon on how well our teachers have been doing virtually in our live uh, instruction. Because our with with my analyzing I ready scores, I found that we have increased our proficiency in every grade level. And I look at I ready scores K through eighth. And we have decreased our novice in every grade level. So that's that's tremendous to say while we're doing this virtual instruction. But I feel like that live time that those teachers are on and I'm I'm in daily walkthroughs, I know Ms. Chafin is and the principals are. And uh, we see it every day, we see them, the teachers working hard, we see the students participating. And I feel like we've lost as small amount of instruction as we can through these circumstances. And I think it's really paid off. So um, I have details on all that, but I'm not going to go through all of that. But what else I wanted to mention was that we did a mastery prep A C T bootcamp last week. And it was sponsored by the Promise Neighborhood and ninety percent of our junior class participated in that. And that is also going to be a really, really big help to those students. And we have a uh, version of that A C T bootcamp that is recorded. So those students that did not participate still have an opportunity to do that. We also had workbooks that were provided for them. So they could use those workbooks to work through A C T um, instructions that 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 this person gave them. That will help them with the A C T. Uh, I think that's about it, does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you, Amy, uh, Mr. Carey, do you have anything to add?
Our participation is still running around ninety percent. And I will also say there are teachers there working hard. Uh, if they've had, if they've become worried about another student that I've been contacted and me or Samantha has tried to get up with them. The assignments that are they're being given and required to be turned in. And uh, I guess it's a it's a new way of teaching, going between a computer and and a classroom. Running back and forth, especially on the little ones. But i- if the kids have took advantage of of what we've offered, uh, the they've learned and I can tell you that just personally.
Good, thank, thank you, Mr. Carey. Uh, Ms. Chafin, did you have anything to add?
Um, I just wanted to hit on the assessments really quick. And going back to the teachers, they have worked with me on the assessments, we've already been doing practice assessments. Those have models have been out there for a while. Currently, the United States Department of Education have not lifted the requirements on state testing. So at this point, we are still planning on doing state assessment, which would be the last fourteen calendar days of the school year. The reporting and the accountability is still up in the air, how that will be, you know, presented. They can always manipulate that however they want to. But the actual testing will be modified to an extent, all testing is online. Unless a student has an I A P that requires paper and pencil. So that's going to, you know, require us to get those devices back in the building, get those cleaned up and ready prior to state testing. But the students will still take the test at this time, starting in grades three through eight and then ten and eleven.
Thank you, and I know that's something that the State Department has really been working on. But uh, those federal guidelines, they're not moving much. And as you know, um, public education has some um, opponents. And um, they're kind of trying to take advantage, I feel, of where we are right now in public education. And I think we have done a great job. Uh, and I think our kids, as as we know, because we have the data to support, are still learning and growing and I'm very proud of that. So if we have to take a test to prove it, that's just exactly what we'll do. Uh, the State Department, K D E, has talked to us as superintendents very frequently in the last little bit about. Doing everything they can to make sure that um, we're not just bringing kids back in to test them for fourteen straight long days. They're they're adjusting everything they possibly can and still hoping for a waiver on a lot of those issues. It's not that we do not want to assess our students. It is that we deal with the same restrictions when we bring the whole group in to assess. As we do when we bring a whole entire school back uh, during covid. So um, we're always proud of our students and we we never fear what their results are going to be. So we're just hoping to get a few waivers from the State Department that will shorten it, make it a lot easier for our kids. Um, because what they have dealt with enough um, since March of last year, that has been very different and unusual for them. So, thank you, Pam, we really appreciate it. Samantha, anything particular for Frisky?
Um, no, not, I I can run over just a few little things. We do have uh, food boxes that we're getting every other week from K C E O C. Mr. Masser goes and picks those up every Friday or every other Friday and delivers those. We will be getting those tomorrow, so if anyone knows of anyone who would, you know, benefit from those, we are getting those every other week. Uh, Carabeth and I are working on some at home family activities that will be going out for March and April. As well as uh, Read Across America for March, we have some activities for that. And then April, of course, will be Child Abuse Prevention Month and we have some things that we have put into place for that. Sorry, my cheerleaders cheering. And but we have some things we've put into in place for that as well, so. And of course, just a lot of contacting with Brian as far as calling homes and visiting and all that.
I do know that Samantha delivered several boxes of meals to families. We had uh, put a message out there, we were very concerned about not being able to uh, have lunches to our families since last Friday because of the weather. So um, Samantha took boxes of food to several families herself um, on Wednesday. Because we did not want on Tuesday, actually, to to several, so that they would have food. And then, of course, our crew came in and we delivered uh, Mr. Masser worked diligently with all of the instructional assistants and the cooks. Um, and Amy working remotely to try to get uh, the uh, food out to our families and we did that. So we we always are concerned when we can't do that, so we appreciate that's that Samantha. Uh, Mr. Middleton, do you have anything else? He's frozen, okay, Mr. Masser.
Yeah, oh, I guess we dealt with our first big winter uh, storm session this week. And it's been a, we've had a lot of snow, but we've, our custodians have done a good job of uh, some snow removal. Salting all sidewalks and that's the reason we can have a basketball game tonight. And uh, but that's the first big um, storm we've seen this year. But uh, but we're still able to educate kids. And uh, that's something that's unique, in the past, we called off school, they got zero or nothing. Now we can, we've figured out this virtual and all our teachers are working remotely this week. But they're still, it's just like they're in the classroom. So our kids are not missing out on anything, so that's that's good. And I'd say that's the future in education is what we'll be looking at. Um, Ms. Dixon and I have been in contact, uh, talking about some repairs to the school that that are needed. Uh, some things that are, their life is running out, roofs, uh, some guttering. So just little stuff that we'll be working on uh, to get ready for the spring. Uh, yesterday, we had all our classified on on school grounds. Uh, they came in, I mean, we use teacher aides, cooks, whoever we can pull, we use uh, to do food boxes. And luckily, we caught a break in the weather yesterday, so we was able to run buses up and down the streets and feed a lot of our kids. Uh, you'd be surprised at the people lined up and uh, how many people thank us for providing that. Uh, I know at my house, sometimes we take for granted that we do have milk and uh, food. But uh, you'd be surprised how many people do not have that in our community. And uh, so we keep our kid, we feed our kids, if anybody calls, we're more than happy to take what we have. If we don't have it, we we'll go buy it uh, out of my out of our pockets. So uh, we're we're that kind, we're a small school and we take care of our kids the best we can. If we know about it, that's been a problem in the past, we don't know. But if we know, we'll take care of our kids. Uh, last thing is uh, on our teachers. Uh, I have teachers text me, they worry about the power going off and uh, but they, every day I wake up. They're there, they're sitting in front of their computer and uh, they're doing their job. And uh, and I couldn't be more hap- I couldn't be happier for what to have a staff that is willing to do what it takes, anything. And we've talked about this before, but uh, anytime we've asked them to do anything, they've been ready. Because they know that what's best for kids. And we're done, I believe, what's best for kids. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Masser, Mr. Middleton.
I'm sorry, I don't have real good service here in the weight room and the door's been opening and uh, things of that nature. So when uh, the service is not real good here. Um, just to mirror off what Mr. Masser and 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 Mr. Carey, Ms. Dixon's already said about our staff. Um, the group that that I work with, Mr. Carey, Mr. Messer, myself, we each are divided up with a group of teachers that we work with. And and I just want to commend those those teachers, I've got the grades four through eight group that that I work closely with. And uh, they are absolutely um, wearing it out, they're they're doing just a outstanding, awesome job. And I just want to give them uh, give them the the uh, some the credit for what they're doing. Because they're they're making it uh, so much better for our kids and our kids are are getting a lot more than uh, as Mr. Messer said, than what we've ever gotten in the past. And we've had to go N T I days or snow days. Um, as far as the sports side of things go, um, I will touch just real quickly on some upcoming things that we have. Uh, we are hosting the uh, fifty first district basketball tournament at our place this year. Uh, this Saturday, we will uh, we play Knox Central Boys Do and that will have our brackets set. And then I'm going to have a meeting next week uh, with the A Ds uh, from the other three schools uh, to go over some specifics as far as what we can and cannot do. Um, waiting to hear back from the Health Department, our attendance on what we can allow has to be approved by the local Health Department. Um, I know with the state tournament, uh, Rupp Arena is allowing only fifteen fifteen percent capacity. I know that's that's kind of what K H S A A wants to recommend. But again, it's one of those clauses where it's left up to your local health departments in doing that. Um, we are going to try to uh, work things out with the other schools. Um, to allow us to host the district tournament again next year. Uh, because it is a good revenue for the schools, I know we did that with the thirteenth regional A tournament. Uh, and most most everyone that I've spoke with as far as the A Ds go from the other three schools are in favor of doing that. Um, just have to work out the monetary uh, a part of that goes as far as the proceeds and everything goes. Um, but that's something that's going to be brought up as well. So the capacity that we're going to have to have or be allowed to have for the district tournament is all pending on what the Health Department uh, approves. Uh, that will start uh, May or March the fifteenth. Uh, we'll play two girls games on Monday night, we'll clear the gym after the first game, sanitize that. Uh, and then let the the next group come in on Tuesday, the sixteenth. Uh, the one and four seed for the boys will play. Uh, on Wednesday, the seventeenth, the two and three seed for the boys will play. Thursday will be the girls championship game and Friday will be the boys championship game. Uh, the regional tournament will start uh, the next Monday, which is going to be the twenty second. Uh, Middlesbrough is actually hosting that and I think the plans are still to have that at the arena in Corbin. Uh, that will be a full eight days. Uh, Mr. Carey, myself and and Mr. Simpson's worked that for the last few years. Uh, Will's helped us a couple of times, that is a long week. Uh, and then the state tournament will start uh, the last of March and it'll finish up on like April the third. Um, so we're hoping to uh, to be able to get everything in as far as our spring sports go. Uh, middle school um, softball, baseball and high school softball and baseball. Uh, they'll actually start their practicing next week. Um, what days is weather permitting, they're going to be outside on the field doing what they can. Um, and when it doesn't permit, uh, at that time, there'll be some flexibility where we can get them in the batting cage some uh, inside. But we prefer them to be outside as much as possible because that's where they're going to be playing at. Uh, their season actually starts for softball, uh, middle school starts uh, March the fifteenth. And so with middle school baseball and high school's a couple of weeks behind that. So hopefully um, we can get a full spring season in for our athletes and that includes tennis. Um, and other spring athletes uh, or spring sports that we have going on. So other than that, that's that's really all I have. I know the biggest thing that comes out of this district tournament is people wanting tickets, they want in, they everybody wants in. Uh, but we've got uh, guidelines that we have to follow and that's what we just have to let people know. Uh, just because uh, other people may not be doing it the right way, that doesn't mean that I'm not going to. And this Dix and the other administrators that we're not going to do it the right way. Uh, and that's what we try to do and and we've been blessed, we have our teams not been quarantined or shut down due to it. Um, and a lot of other, a lot of other teams around the state has been. And I think that has to do with the the protocol and the procedures that we're following. But unless anybody has any questions, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Middleton, it's not been easy to get people to understand all those protocols. But we have been lucky and we have been adamant that they be followed. And we've been lucky that our kids have been um, able to play and continue play. And that's why we wanted to make sure that we were enforcing all those things. Um, that is all we have, I know we've gone a little lengthy, but I really wanted to make sure that we spent some time on talking about how we were uh, looking. At our input from our parents on our reentry plan and that we are moving forward and trying to get kids back in a seat. If that's what their families choose to do, um, that is something that we um, feel really uh, blessed to be able to do. And again, we'll follow guidelines and we might have a a um, complete order to shut down again. And if we do, then we will take it one day at a time as we had, we're prepared, we're prepared to teach from home and do a very good job with it. So we can handle it for the remainder of this year and we hope that we can get through with restrictions being lifted. Um, I will tell you that we're still not allowed to host any large gatherings. Which means the prom is not something that we're probably going to be able to do because you cross grade levels. And and that is against the new guidance that has been sent out to us. Uh, however, if we can have a basketball game, we can have a graduation. Uh, so we will be looking at uh, preparing to have a graduation with limited capacity. Utilizing our entire gym as well as an honors program so that our seniors are still getting their honors program, their graduation. And their vacular, we will move to our gymnasium so that we have enough room to be able to um, have those families brought in. We do not want our seniors to have to miss out on anything. Um, unfortunately, the prom is the only thing that we don't have a workaround. But we will be preparing for our vacular, our um, graduation and our honors program for our seniors as well. And following our guidelines to make sure that they have that opportunity. And following our guidelines to make sure that they have that opportunity. And that is all we have. Ms. Sandy?
So we have a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now let's go Tigers.